Call to order the Delaware County Commissioners meeting, Monday, July 15th, 2019, 9:04 a.m. Please stand and do the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in justice with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Hope everybody had a nice weekend. Mr. Craig Craft Committee, roll call, please.
Mr. Kane, here. Mr. Henry, here. Mr. Reagan.
Present.
Mr. Stevens, here.
We have an adult probationist, DCCC, here, right here. You must speak first.
Hi, Liz Thefatt, DCCC. We are asking that Lindsey Willis be the adult probation representative on the DOC board.
On the board. And that was voted by your board, Linda?
Yes.
Sledge.
I'll make a motion. We make that appointment.
Say it.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't think Mr. -- I don't believe he's here yet today.
Do we have anybody from Flatland?
No, not yet. Keep that table. Pringle of minutes, please.
Make a motion. We approve July 1st, 2019 minutes.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes. Okay. Can you tell us who the appointment again was?
Lindsey Willis.
Is it Willis or Williams?
It's W.I.L.N.E.S. Willis.
Thank you. Okay, Marta Moody, the base of the plant. There she is.
Yeah.
Marta Moody, Executive Director for the Delaware Muncie Metropolitan Plant Commission. I also have with me Spencer Delton, AR Engineering. They are the firm that has been working on the preparing the plant that is known as ABCDG subdivision. It's a two-lot subdivision located on the eastern side of State Route 67, just south of where 300 West curves into 67. And I think when I filed that, did I file an aerial with you so you could sort of?
Yeah.
Okay. And the Plaque Committee met last Friday, and there were several changes that were requested to the drawing. So the one that you've got in front of you has been changed significantly. And Spencer has copies of it for your signature should you approve it. Basically, your part in this is the acceptance of right-of-way that they are dedicating for County Road 300 West. And it's an odd piece of right-of-way because way back when, I'm not exactly sure when, the state came through and bought some right-of-way when they did improvements, but they didn't buy all the way to the center road at 300 West. So there's a 16 and a half foot strip of 300 West and then south of the state right-of-way, they're dedicating the required 25 feet of half right-of-way. And that is the matter in front of you today. The Plaque Committee basically approved the plat pending changes to the drawing and subject to the Commissioner's acceptance of the right-of-way. So if you have any questions of me or Spencer, we'll be happy to.
Would you like to tell the public what is going to become on the road? If this all -- or is that competent?
No. No. So the south parcel or lot two of the subdivision is planned to be sold and developed with a drive-off of both the state and the county roads.
It's very Dollar General, right?
We had one in that area at one time that saw a lot of.
Yes. For the rezoning. That was up at 400 West, and they were trying to rezone the northwest corner there. And this property where the ABC builders and instructors, whatever offices, that area, including this parcel, is zoned right-of-business already. So it was, so they moved their plans down to there.
So it's a better fair?
Yes. And I do have a copy of the state approval for a driveway cut onto 67. And then they understand that before they can begin their approval, their construction, they'll have to obtain a drainage permit, a driveway permit, and if their outlet is going to the regulated drainage to the north, they'll have to go to the drainage board. So they understand all that. There are a lot of things that still need to be done. This is sort of the first step in creating the two lots, Lot 1 and Lot 2.
So they're going to use both lots?
No. Lot 1 contained the existing building for ABC apprenticeship trust.
Okay, very good.
The south lot is the one would be used.
Lot 2. Okay, thank you, Marta. Thank you, Spencer.
I'll approve.
Motion to approve, second.
I'd like to. Yeah, I'd like to hold on to this for another meeting.
For you?
Just my thought.
Okay, well.
Open the table up now. I'll make a motion to table it.
I'll second.
Motion, or roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you.
Could we get the copies of the accurate layout, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's the plat. Now, they have also filed with the Board of zoning appeals for a variance because they need to, because of the driveway, and we've got a side plan that shows their layout, Chairman?
Okay.
And the, under the development standards and the county zoning ordinance, there's a 50-foot building line all the way around. And they, because of the driveway, they need to slide the building to the south, and they'll have a 35-foot side set back rather than 50. So they're requesting a variance. And they were set for a meeting the end of this month, but that meeting was subject to the approval of the plat. So that will have to be continued in front of the BZA as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Resolution number 2019-025.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes. Okay, resolution number 2019-026, identifying the tax certificate. Anybody here to speak on this behalf?
Is this the parcel for the Muncie Mission?
I believe so. It's down there.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes. Okay, Department heads, elected officials. Do I hear?
Well, I'll just go ahead and take this opportunity then. Melanie Marshall, Delaware County Fair Board member. And the fair kicked off this past week with 4H events, and we've already had a couple of grandstand events. We've got lots of fun things coming up this week, so please come out and join us.
And tonight's, it's the.
Barnyard Olympics.
And the gate opens at 4?
Gate is open all day.
I mean, that's funded charge.
Right. Because today's the 4H twine show, and our Delaware County Fair Queen and her court have done an outstanding job representing us. I don't know if any of you heard them on the radio this morning, plugging the events, and they've been out there. We've been keeping them busy, so I think they're having a great time so far.
And the auction is on, it's always on Wednesday.
Wednesday, and I believe that starts at 2:00.
2:00. So everybody can show up and buy a pig or two.
Jason, could you come in here, please? Jason, have you had anybody from the City of Muncie contact you in reference to any agreements or anything?
No.
About the EMS. Okay, we got a letter back from Quirk Hunter. Says, Dear John, this letter's in reference to the above entitled correspondence. The City of Muncie has received your letter dated July 1st, 2019, as well as your letter dated June 3rd, 2019. The City of Muncie was not aware that they needed to provide a plan of any type for the Delaware County Commissioners for the actions they take in the City of Muncie. The last communication we had with the Commissioners on the topic, we were told we can do whatever we want. However, to show to Mr. Retsch that this has been taken care of, Muncie Fire Chief Eddie Bell has already scheduled a meeting with the 911 director. This meeting has been scheduled to move forward with this great opportunity to protect the citizens of Muncie, to save lives, and continue the outstanding work of the City of Muncie First Responders. Signed by John Perk, addressed to the Commissioners. But you've not been contacted about any kind of agreements or anything?
Not, no, I've not been contacted about any agreements, any interlocal agreement or any intercept agreement with the City of Muncie by any of the Muncie officials. I've heard from other EMS departments that they've been contacting, trying to work their, work around us apparently, but that's their prerogative.
So it's my opinion that without any type of working agreement like we have on file right now, if something should happen that the City of Muncie put these ambulances in service, that at that point, we pull. Well, we got one truck here? Two trucks?
There's two, there's two trucks. Currently, there's two trucks assigned to the downtown station, two ambulances, and then you've got the others. The others that are outside the city limits.
That's my opinion. I just think it'll get, it'll cause problems and be hectic without any kind of agreement or any communication other than a nasty letter from their attorney.
Well, the attorney for the city that sent us that letter, Jason, who provides EMS service to the City of Muncie right now?
Delaware County EMS.
Does the City of Muncie have ambulance service right now?
No.
Well, they own ambulances. They don't. They own ambulances, but they have no service right now. Correct. Correct. So when they get up and running, how do we know, you know, are we still going to take calls?
We don't know any of that. That's why I say we.
Well, the local union, 1348 for the fire department?
Yeah, the IFF.
Yeah. One thing not debatable is eight ambulances is greater than five. Where are they getting eight at? Because they only, what, four? So are they still planning on having R5 run with their three? What areas will R5 run? What areas will their three run? See, I don't think Mr. Quirk really understands when he sent that letter. This is just a little bit bigger and a little bit more than what he's talking about. We need to know something. Are our ambulances going to stay within the city limits? Are we still going to have the five coming in? Are they only going to stay within the fire district with those ambulances that they're putting in their firehouses? You know, we need to know something. Are we supposed to still work with them and cover? That's what we're trying to find out. But I think it's like everything else that goes on, they don't have no plan to do anything. It seems like it's just spend, 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 spend. Unlike the county, you know, we're in pretty good financial shape. You know, with our council doing everything that they do, with what we do, and we work together, you know, we're in good shape. We just need for them to come up and say, you guys are booted out of the city as soon as we're up and running? Or we're only going to run in these districts, and you guys are going to run in the other five districts? That's what we're trying to figure out, and nobody wants to tell us anything.
Well, from the meeting that we had with the city council, it was made pretty obvious that they were going to run citywide. I mean, the mayor said, why wouldn't they? And that's the people that they serve, so I would assume that that's their plan. But again, I've not received any information on what they're planning to do. I can tell you this from 20 years of experience. You can, you can create a district, but in EMS, you're so busy that 80% of the time, you're not going to be in that district because there's so many calls.
Right.
And that's not, I mean, that's true of so many different jurisdictions. And like I said, I think there, you know, there's, there's just so many questions, and we're not getting any answers. You know, nothing, nothing official. The last time I was approached, they wanted me to come up with a plan for them, and we put some things together, and it was not palatable because they weren't getting paid. So.
Well, I thought the same thing you did, Jason, you know, that they were going to get the three, they were going to put them in, they were going to run everything themselves. And then, you know, the fire union that is supporting that, that's going against their EMS brothers, stayed in there, you know, that eight are better than five? Well, they don't have eight ambulances. So are they going to use us? They go to bring from other.
What I've been, what I've been told from other EMS services is they have no plans to use us at all, and it's, they're doing it in their power. Their EMS chief or their alleged EMS chief is doing everything in her power to work around dealing with us or working with us.
That's all we would like to know. I'm fine with that. We just, we just need to know that.
Yeah.
I just, I'm worried that this will cost people their lives if it's not, if they don't have a solid plan. And if we need to be part of that plan, I'm willing to do that, but I'm not willing to go out there, they put three trucks in service, and us just go out there, and whoever gets a call gets it. I'm not doing that. There's got to be some organization. There's got to be, we've got to have some agreements. We've got, we've got to have something.
I agree. Their willing agent that they proposed, he made a couple of statements that are very concerning about how they would get dispatched first, and if they needed ALS, then they would call us. But they're not waiting another six or eight minutes for ALS, so they're just going to take patients to the hospital. And there's just some concerning things there. I mean, we've been dual dispatched for years. I can tell you the model for us would change if and when they put these ambulances in. I mean, we would, we would have to service our people in a different manner, meaning our people, meaning our employees. They would, they would have to be assigned differently for us to be able to manage and cover, you know, even if we do work with them. So whether we know or we don't know, things are going to change as far as Delaware County EMS is concerned, no matter what. I have sat down with my command staff, and we have three different options of moving forward when this happens. And I'm quite confident that any one of those three will be effective for the citizens of Delaware County. Whether or not it will be effective for the citizens of Muncie, I can't tell you.
I just think they need to, at least let us know something, because I hear they're looking to get started here soon.
Well, that's, that's what I'm here to.
And, you know, and.
All this first is what I was told yesterday.
And honestly, even the guys that work EMS, they need to know something too.
Absolutely.
You know, and we can't tell them anything. We can't do anything until the city comes in and, you know, this is our plan, we're going to cover these areas, we'd like for you guys to still continue these areas, or, you know, you guys are just totally out.
Okay. Paul has some information that he might be able to provide, he just told me, so I'd love to share as well, as well.
Okay.
Paul Singleton, Director 911. I did have a meeting with Eddie Bell and Rachel Clark. Clark, yes. And the only thing that we have confirmed to this point is they're going to run their ambulances in the same fire districts as 2s, 3s, and 6s, which will be the station up at MLK, the one at, on Memorial and Hackley, and the one down on Point. That they're going to run ambulances in each of those stations, and they're going to cover the exact same fire boundaries. That's the only thing we have confirmed at this point. We've got a follow-up meeting. I'm going to be on vacation next week, so the Monday I get back, we have a follow-up meeting to try to lock down some other things, items of discussion.
You guys have talked about, like, the toning equipment or how they're going to have the ambulance toned out?
We have, and we're going to tone, they're going to be toned the same as the fire trucks. So there's already toning equipment in there for the fire trucks.
And they'll, they'll stay on fire frequency?
That's one thing we haven't got hammered out yet. We're looking at some options of moving one of their channels to their EMS, but we've got to do some coordination with the state. So as far as, I was given no deadline. If someone's here on August 1st on our end of it, there's just no way that that can happen by then. So I don't know. From our meeting, I don't think they have a drop dead date.
We'll keep track of any additional costs, because I don't want.
Yeah. It'll go to the city and not the county.
Right.
Jason, I'd like for you to come back up.
Yes, ma'am.
We put this in layman's terms. I'm the only simple man on this board, these two professionals, and I appreciate what all you guys have been working on. So right now, when the fire truck comes and the EMS, that EMS is not going to be there, so this ALS ambulance will be taking that patient to the hospital without any, what?
I can't, the short answer to your question is no. What, from what Director Singleton has described, they want ALS ambulances in those three areas, then they would be primarily dispatched. But my question is, is what happens in one area when the second truck, or there's a second call in that area? Or, you know, are you, how are you covering those? I would say multiple times a day, in excess of a dozen. We have more than, than three ambulances on calls at a single time. So I'm not sure. My question would be how, who's your backup? Which they cited Eaton, they cited Hartland, they cited IU, and I've talked to people at all those places, and they don't seem to know, they don't seem to know what's happening either. But what I, what I anticipate from this is they would send the fire department's ambulance, fire department personnel would pick up the patient and then just rush him to the hospital. If they were, if they were an ALS patient, they, they may or may not get ALS care. So your shortness of breath, your chest pains, your strokes, things that we would do definitive care and treatment for in the field, they, they don't, they won't have that capability because they won't have the licensure of the people certified to do it. I was told yesterday that they have a three-year plan to get paramedics for all those trucks that have become an ALS service, so they're, they're buying ALS equipment now. So I don't, I can't answer that knowledgeably without knowing what they're thinking about doing. However, the speculation is, is it could be that people don't get definitive care. And that's, that's certainly concern.
Thank you.
You know, the other thing is they've already sent us a letter. It should be out of the dispatch center in November, I believe.
In November, yeah.
So what's going to happen then?
I had no idea. Maybe when something happens, maybe the mayor turn around like he does on everything else. Hold on. I know nothing about it.
I can tell you this, the, the people traveling and visiting Delaware County, all the small towns will have one of the best EMS services in the state. And we have a group of dedicated staff that have been through an awful lot. I was looking just the other day, just paramedics. I've got 11 that have been here more than 10 or 15 years, and those people have really been through a lot. So, you know, we're working to do everything we can do to make sure that we maintain our staff and, you know, encourage them to see the light at the end of the tunnel when this is all done.
Yeah.
Jason?
Thank you.
Is it time to share the Commissioners what your proposal is?
I guess with the Council's blessing, we have looked at some different possibilities, and I sent you all a plan to give our employees a pay raise. And the, the paramedics are the, that is essentially the pay scale that we have not kept up with times. And potentially, if this is passed through county council, our employees that have, it's broken up into classifications. A class four paramedic is a brand-new person. They haven't put a year in, they haven't gone through all of their, I guess, indoctrination into the service all the way. Then they upgrade a class by completing years of service as well as training. They have to have good marks on their employee evaluations, their no medical concerns from the medical director, those types of things. And then as they progress through those hoops, if you will, then they will increase in class all the way up to a class one paramedic. Class one paramedic will, this year, receive, if this is passed by county council, would receive a $5,000 pay raise, and then next year would receive a $10,000 pay raise. So their base salary would increase by $10,000 after, after the five years and, and all of the stepping stones that they'll have to go through to get to that point. We have several people that will be class one paramedics this year and next year, and then they will gradually increase and be able to attain those pay raises. So basically, you're setting your first year in the base salary, then you get a $2,000 raise, then a $3,000 raise, then a $5,000 raise over five years. But there are benchmarks for each one of those, those particular classes. So you can be, if you can't reach a class two paramedic position by three years, that's because you failed to maybe go to, go to training, do something properly. You've got complaints, you've got bad employee reviews, you've got bad medical treatment reviews, something along those lines are keeping you from doing that. So it's, it's an encouragement for people to invest in their education. It's an encouragement for people to stay with us, and it's not such a long-term stepping stone that it's not attainable. So we feel like that'll help us with retention on paramedics. And that's why I say, I know that today, as of today, I think we have 11 classified paramedic people that have been here more than 10 years. And that, that'll be good news to them. They've not heard this yet, so I'm sure that I'll go back and ask a lot of questions. But that, that, that plan, as you have all indicated through email, you're supporting, and we're hoping to pass that this time through the Finance Committee and then on to Council, and then into the 2020 budget.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Glad that you put it together, and we can afford it. And while you're up there, would you like to fill us in on the endurance on?
We had another successful year of Ironman, like 2,000 athletes into the water and 2,000 athletes out of the water. That's one thing that I, I am quite concerned with every year, because statistically, you know, they, there are people that drown in events like this, and we host several of these a year, so that's our biggest concern. It went off without a hitch. We had a couple of patients that did end up being transported to the hospital. Couple of them were ALS patients that were treated for severe condition, but everybody is stable. Great job by the medical staff and certainly our staff that gets them back to the medical tent, and we run a command structure out there that's second to none for large events. So it's dangerous. It's a, it's a mile and a half swim, it's a 57-mile bike ride, and a 13-mile run. So it's, it's certainly an all-day event, and we basically set up an entire EMS service out there. I think we had five, six, five trucks, five transport ambulances and three supervisors that were, that were running the event. So it was, again, successful. So it was, again, successful this year.
Very well. Thanks.
Again, do you want me to bring up the, the truck now, just while I'm standing?
Yes.
I've just, we've got one vehicle that's due to be sold at auction. It's a 2007 chassis, I believe it's a 1988 box. It was last remounted in 2008. Denise, did you get the email?
Yes.
I'll, I'll just read it then off for the record. I'm asking if that vehicle will be deemed as surplus and we'll get it on the auction site to, to sell. That truck's been replaced by a ambulance that we've remounted, so it's, it's already off the insurance.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kane.
Thank you. Anybody else? So we see this year over there, and I'm sure you had a lot of your staff out there helping.
So we've got to work on it, Sheriff. Yeah, we have, I don't know the exact number, but we have dozens of people assisting with the Ironman. Like Jason said, we didn't have any issues, so kudos to those who organize this event. It's a great event for Delaware County and Muncie, and we appreciate the business.
And then this week, you're going to be at the fair, so you guys are going to be busy.
We will be at the fair all week, like Melanie said, so if you don't have planes, come on out and get some great food.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Nobody else? Okay. Payments of claims, $1,837,327.20.
Motion to...
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Now it's time for the public. Have any comments? If not, I'll make a motion to recess.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Reagan?
Yes. Thank you.